Hello. My name is Brian O'Connor. I'm the chairman of the Stratford Planning Commission. It is now 6:02, and I call the meeting to order. The Stratford Planning Commission is now open for public hearing for the petition to advertise to be heard at this session. Regular members present at this meeting are Mr. Aurelia, Ms. Graham, Mr. Boyd. Our alternate member is Ms. Morse. Members who couldn't make it, Mr. Vacola. We also welcome Sutha Atadat, Town Planner, Aileen Marsh, Recording Secretary, and Town Attorney, John Florrick. Please note for the record that Ms. Morse, alternate member of the Planning Commission, is sitting in place of Mr. Vacola, regular member. Before calling for the first petition, I would like to inform those of you who have never appeared before us that it is policy of this commission to have question of the petitioner directed through the chairman. The chairman reserves the right to rule on cross-examination for the purpose of clarification and technical questions. I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 p.m. and be continued to another date which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 p.m. tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised on the town planning and zoning webpage and in town clerk's office in accordance to state statute. I will now advise the town planner to read the first petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also would like to add that the petition was advertised legally in Connecticut Post based on state statute requirements on August 2nd and August 12th. And I'm going to read the petition right now. This is a petition for an eight-lot subdivision at 325 and 335 James Farm Road in Stratford. And the petitioners are William and Fedorko and Fedorko. And the lot sizes... One second. The lot sizes vary from .5 acres to one acre, and the lots are located in an RS2 zone. Total acreage is approximately 6.48 acres.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Florrick. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford, where I also reside. At this time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and a photo of the sign which I had posted on the property for the record and make reference to a folder of exhibits which I have handed to each of you, which contain four exhibits which I'm going to be referring to during the course of my presentation. Now, this is an application for an eight-lot subdivision and a referral from the... to the Planning Commission from the Water Pollution Control Authority under 8-24 in order to hook up to sewers servicing this property. This property consists of approximately 232,000 square feet, an excess of five acres. It's located on the left side of James Farm Road immediately after you cross the bridge over the Merritt Parkway heading north. As Sutha indicated, the lots range in size from 20,380 square feet to 43,912 square feet. The average lot size is approximately three-quarters of an acre, or 29,076 square feet. All of the lots conform in every respect with the Stratford zoning regulations and the Stratford subdivision regulations. As I indicated, this is a two-part application, an 824 review for the Water Pollution Control Authority for sewers and a subdivision application. I'm not going to get into the merits of the subdivision application this evening for reasons that I will explain to you in a minute, but I am going to request that you do act on the 824 referral because the Water Pollution Control Authority is having a public hearing on August 22nd, and if you act on that tonight, they can deal with it at their August public hearing. Additionally, because I'm not going to be able to complete my presentation this evening, the next Planning Commission meeting is on September 20th, and I hereby grant this commission an extension of the 65-day statutory deadline within which to complete the hearing and the 35-day statutory deadline within which to complete the public hearing, just so that we don't have any problems as far as that's concerned. Exhibit one is a copy of Section 4.2 of the zoning regulations. And I hand that to you simply to show what the dimensional requirements of the various zones in Stratford are, and I've highlighted in yellow the dimensions as they relate to an RS2 half-acre zone. And you can see a lot area of 20,000 square feet is required. They need 100-foot of lot width and 125 feet of lot depth. As I indicated previously, all of the lots in this subdivision satisfy that requirement. Exhibit two is a copy of one of the pages in the Plan of Conservation and Development, and I've highlighted in pink and circled that pink area with blue pen the area where this property is located in relation to the Merritt Parkway in the north end of the town of Stratford, just to give you an orientation as to where exactly this property is. Exhibit three is a copy of the Zoning Commission's Letter of Approval dated October 24, 2019, indicating that the zone of the subject premises was changed from RS1, one-acre zone, to RS2 half-acre zone on October 23, 2019. Therefore, all of this property is located in a half-acre zone. And then I want to discuss the administrative comments, starting with Exhibit four, which is an email from John Casey to Christy Angelus. Christy Angelus is our engineer who was working with John Casey, putting together the engineering documents that John needed in order to evaluate the subdivision's compliance with your subdivision regulations. And in this email, John says that he acknowledges that all previous questions, comments, and concerns regarding the subdivision plan has been addressed by Christy Angelus's submittals. So John Casey is satisfied with our plans as of the date he wrote this email. And then in her advisory staff report, Sutha gave you the history of the zone change to RS2, a description of the property, photos of its location, and comments from other town staff. Sutha pointed out that the wetlands application is scheduled for a hearing tomorrow night, and it is, in fact, scheduled for a hearing tomorrow night. If it had been... If it was heard last night, or tonight's meeting was tomorrow night instead of the Wetlands Commission, we could have gotten all this taken care of in one month, but unfortunately, that's not the way it works. And she also indicates that the town engineer had stated that all of his comments had been addressed and that the subject property needs a sewer extension authorized from the Water Pollution Control Authority, and that, as I indicated to you, the Water Pollution Control referral is reviewed to you... has been referred to you for action tonight. Additionally, fire chief has raised no questions on this proposed application. No comments were received from the police chief or the building inspector. She also indicated that the housing density proposed for this property is generally consistent with the density requirements in the Plan of Conservation and Development. Now, as I mentioned earlier, this is a two-part application, one for an eight-lot subdivision and one for an 824 referral. The subdivision application cannot proceed tonight for the reasons I've already explained to you. However, the 824 referral can proceed tonight, and I would ask that you act on that tonight because, as I indicated, Water Pollution Control Authority has a tentative public hearing scheduled for August 22nd. Now, finally, I want to mention something to you which is funny in a way, but important in many ways. When I submitted the application for half-acre zone in 2019, I was required to send letters to the neighbors prior to that public hearing. And as soon as those letters went out, war drums and smoke signals were rising from the houses on James Farm Road, and I started getting telephone calls. Neighbor after neighbor wanted to know what Attorney Knott was up to regarding this property. Obviously, this reaction from the neighbors in the James Farm Road area was the consequence of these neighbors having to endure numerous, continuous, obnoxious applications for affordable housing in the area of James Farm Road. These applications have been very time-consuming, very stressful to the neighbors, and very expensive for the neighbors to oppose by hiring lawyers and experts, and very expensive for the town to oppose in hiring lawyers and experts. The neighbors' concern that was by virtue of the fact that I was coming in for a zone change from one acre to half acre, I was going to make it easier for developers to create an affordable housing complex on this site because I was doubling the density of the lots. That's what they thought. Nothing could be further from the truth. Doubling the density of single-family houses does not make that property amenable to affordable housing. It makes it amenable to single-family housing. However, it was a legitimate issue that the neighbors were concerned about. When I found out about it, I contacted Mr. Fedorko and explained the issue to him, and I also explained to him that the solution to the neighbors' concerns was for us to record a restriction on the land records, in which restriction, we would agree not to develop this property in any way other than single-family residential housing. And Mr. Fedorko has agreed to that. And I put that on the record at the Zoning Commission public hearing in 2019 when we received zoning approval from one acre to half acre. So if this subdivision application is approved, this property is going to be restricted to single-family residential zoning by virtue of a deed restriction. It'll get recorded on the land records, and it will modify the potential use of that property in perpetuity. And that essentially will take a five-and-a-half-acre, six-acre site off the table as far as affordable housing development is concerned up in that area. And when I mentioned that to the neighbors, they were very happy to hear that. So therefore, as far as tonight is concerned, I don't have anything further other than to ask you to continue this matter for a public hearing in September and act on the 824 referral, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Knott. I would now like to ask the town planner to summarize her staff report, and is it consistent or inconsistent with the POCD?
Thank you, Chairman. Like Attorney Knott mentioned, this proposed subdivision would encourage single-family residential housing in an existing single-family residential zone, and the density that's proposed is not uncommon in that area. Like, if you look at the image that I provided on my staff report on page three, it looks like it is generally consistent with the observed housing density on nearby parcels affronting Judith Terrace, James Farm Road, and Keating Drive. So in terms of consistency with POCD, it does meet the housing goals and objectives of the Plan of Conservation and Development, where we also had an updated housing plan that was adopted recently, last year, and that plan calls for an increase of housing opportunities for residents, and this is one of those opportunities, even though it's not a great amount of housing, it still adds to the, you know, missing middle housing for Stratford and increasing the housing count for those who are looking for housing opportunities. Having said that, like Attorney Knott pointed out, the Planning Commission by statute is required to wait until at least review the wetlands decision before they render their own decision. You can close the public hearing, but you cannot render a decision until, you know, 35 days have passed after the wetlands hearing. So in this case, it makes sense to actually keep the hearing open for two reasons. One is to wait and see what the outcome of the wetlands regulation would be tomorrow. I'm sorry, Wetlands Commission's meeting would be tomorrow. And the second is also, I discussed this with Attorney Knott this morning, regarding the time of the meeting. So I received a phone call from a neighbor stating that the sign posted had a different time, like it was for 7:00 p.m., and the legal notice shows 6:00 p.m. And Attorney Knott also called me, and he mentioned that he may have written 7:00 p.m. in the certificates of mailing. So in order to, you know, give public an opportunity to participate in this public comment period, it is advisable to keep this open until next month. The applicant has anyhow requested a continuation of time, so it's just the commission has to vote on it and sanction the additional time until next month. And then in the meantime, whenever I get that report of the Wetlands Agency, I will forward that to you all by email, but I will also post it on the website for those who are interested in reading the outcome of the meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
John Florrick.
Can I make a suggestion, and I'm sure Attorney Knott won't have an objection? Because of the issue with the time, just for the record, since it's going to be continued until the 20th, would you send out new letters of mailing indicating that the hearing has been held open and it's going to be on September 20th, and that people are invited to attend if they want?
That's a good idea, John. I will do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Attorney Knott at this time? Nope, thank you. All right. I'll now ask members of the public to comment in favor or opposition to the petition. I will also allow general comments and observations from those who are neither in favor or in opposition to the petition. Each member of the public will be provided three minutes to make their arguments. If someone wishes to speak again, you will be given a chance after everyone who signed up gets their chance to speak first. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Is there anyone who is neither in favor or in opposition but wishes to provide comments to this petition? I will now advise the commission to continue the public hearing since a recommendation from... Sorry, let me start that again. I will now advise the commission to continue the public hearing since a recommendation from Inland Wetlands Agency is yet to be received. This way, the members of the public who could not attend the meeting today and/or who wished to speak after receiving the recommendations of the Inland Wetlands Agency would have an opportunity to speak at next month's Planning Commission meeting. Looking for a motion just to continue the public hearing to September 20, '22.
Paul Aurelia. Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion, that the hearing be held open to the next meeting, September 20th.
May I have a second?
Sarah Graham, I second that motion.
Mr. Chairman, if you make a motion stating that the meeting will take place at the same place and same time, I don't have to re-advertise the legal notice, so could you please state that the meeting on September 20th would happen in Stratford Town Hall, Council Chambers at 7:00 p.m.?
6:00 p.m.
Okay. So I'd like to amend that motion to state that the meeting will take place at Stratford Town Hall, 6:00 p.m. on September 20th, Council Chambers.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Chairman, you can get to that three-year-old's birthday party.
All right. Thank you. Just to reiterate, a motion has been made and seconded and voted all in favor for the public hearing on the petition of William and Fedorko and a state of David Fedorko seeking an eight-lot subdivision at 325 and 335 James Farm Road property be continued to September 20, 2022 Planning Commission meeting for further consideration. The public hearing is now continued to Planning Commission's September 20 regular scheduled meeting, which will open at 6:00 p.m. in the Stratford Town Hall, Council Chambers. With that, we can move to the next order of business on the agenda, which is the administrative session. May... Can I get a motion to move forward with the regular Planning Commission's agenda items?
Sarah Graham, I'd like to make a motion to open our meeting to the regular agenda items.
Thank you.
Paul Aurelia, I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? All right. Thank you. Now, we're moving on to the regular Planning Commission regular administrative session. Just for the record, for this part of the session, the first item on today's agenda, petitions, has been continued. Moving to the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from May 17, 2022. Looking for a motion to approve these minutes. Can I get a second, please?
Sarah Graham, I second that motion.
All in favor? Thank you. All right. Moving down to agenda item number three, zoning referrals. This is a text amendment to Section 15B.4, separation required for adult-use cannabis. At this point, we're just going to open... Looking for a motion just to open this up for discussion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll make a motion to open that for discussion.
Sarah Graham, I second that motion.
All in favor? Thank you. At this point, I'd like to invite Ms. Atadat to just give us a general overview of this topic, please.
Thank you. So if you recall, a few months ago, this was referred by the Zoning Commission to the Planning Commission to include adult-use retail cannabis facilities as part of Section 15B, which already allows medical marijuana facilities, and the commission voted in favor, and the amendment passed, and the town adopted this regulation. But at that time, the cap for the dispensary was one for every 25,000 people. But in May... On May 24, 2022, the Connecticut State Legislature lifted this capping requirement, so now you can have as many dispensaries as you can for any community based on the lottery. And Stratford would like to include in our own zoning regulations a cap on this separation of dispensaries, one for every 25,000 people. And so the existing regulation on separation requirements, Section 15B.4, will be amended to include the language that says, "No more than one dispensary or one production facility shall be allowed for every 25,000 residents of the municipality," as determined by the most recent decennial census. And when determining applicability, the population number will be rounded down to the nearest 25,000 cohort. And in terms of consistency with POCD, it simplifies the zoning code to increase its usefulness and understandability, so it is consistent with our POCD objectives. And that's all. I mean, you can see the recommendation from our Planning and Zoning Administrator, Jay Hibansky, to Zoning Commission restating the same in his staff report.
Obviously, this has been a topic that we've studied on and discussed at length in the past, and I'm sure you understand just the position that they released... The state of Connecticut's released the cap, and zoning has decided to maintain what was originally stated, which was one dispensary per 25,000, which Connecticut's... Or, sorry, Stratford has a population of 52,000, so it'd limit to two dispensaries. Again, we've discussed this, and we've voted for it in the past, and this is just to add this cap. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Sutha?
Tammy Morse here. Because it's so close to that 50,000, I'm just curious if the pop... So we established two dispensaries, all within, you know, the zoning and everything. What happens if the population drops below? I mean, because it's so close, there's only 2,000. What if it went to 49,9? Do we have to... Would one of the dispensaries have to be closed?
One's approved. It stands for life. Like, you can't close something that's already been approved.
Thank you.
William Boyd, Commissioner, Zone 2. I believe it says in there it's rounded up, but it also means it could round down. So if it is 49, they would round it up, which would still... If it went below 45, then there's a consideration. Am I correct?
That is correct. I was... I was going to say that, but she asked a question of something that has been approved. Will it be closed? Anything that is approved formally by the Zoning Commission, you can't close it down.
So in consideration of that, if there were two and the population dropped to 49, and one went out of business, they could actually open a second one because it's still within... Close enough to 50,000? Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? So now we're just looking for a motion to either approve or deny...
Recommend.
Or really recommend that we move forward with this text amendment?
Sarah Graham, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation for text amendment. I don't remember the number.
15B4.
15B4.
William Boyd, Zone 2, Commissioner, seconds that motion to approve 15B4.
Because we've already discussed, we're just going to put this to a vote. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Moving to item five on the agenda, it's an 8-24 review referral by the Stratford Water Pollution Control Authority, WPCA, to extend sewers to 325 and 335 James Farm Road property. Again, just at this point, just going to look for a motion to open this up for discussion.
Paul Aurelia, make a motion to open this item for discussion.
Can I get a second, please?
Sarah Graham, I second the motion.
All in favor? So again, we're going to look to Ms. Atadat to, as the town planner, just give us an overview of this.
Thank you. This is a referral by Stratford Water Pollution Control Authority to review the proposed sewer extensions to 325 and 335 James Farm Road property. Typically, an 8-24 review that is required by state statute is referred by the town council, but in this case, the Water Pollution Control Authority has the authority to, you know, grant sewer extensions, so the referral is coming from them, and your recommendation letter will be addressed to the Water Pollution Control Authority. And all they're requesting is to look into this matter where the lots that are subject to subdivision public hearing tonight do not have sewer connections, public sewer connections. And the applicant has requested for sewer extensions on the right-of-way, and without that, a subdivision cannot be granted without sewer connections. So the town engineer has stated in his report to the staff that sewers would be needed in order to serve the proposed subdivision, as well as to serve adjoining single-family homes that are currently on-site septic systems, which need to be connected to public sewers. Any future, you know, subdivision that happens on the lots, the lines have to be extended to the public sewer on the right-of-way. That'll be extended by Water Pollution and Control Authority. It is consistent with the goals of the Plan of Conservation and Development, the town with the following policies. Number one, the town should ensure that it continues to adequately serve its residents and businesses with public infrastructure and utilities. And number two, the town will require all new development manage stormwater runoff onsite and make efforts to reduce runoff. So this way, you know, the proposed public sewer connections would satisfy these two policies, and therefore, I, as a staff, advised in my report that it is, you know, favorable to grant this, you know... And therefore, I, as a staff, advised in my report that it is, you know, favorable to grant this, you know, request.
Thank you. Just continuing along, I know from the town planner's perspective, we've got the recommendation. And you touched on also the town engineer's comments. We're all positive towards doing this as well. The sewers can handle this extension. This would allow access to the existing residents that are on septic to be able to tie in to this sewer system and still cause no infrastructural issues. So does anybody have any questions or comments?
William Boyd, zone two. The adjoining houses, they're all on septic now?
That's what the engineer stated in his report.
Okay, so the new subdivision will be extended so that they would be on the sewer. And then each of the adjoining properties who are not on sewer now, they can then join the sewer as well. Do we know how many?
I don't know.
Properties, because we're talking eight new ones, but we don't know how many of the others. Now, is it at the town's cost that they extend, or is it at the homeowner's cost that they extend?
I think, I believe when it happens as part of a new development, the developer bears the cost for those individual lots. But the extension on the right-of-way would be at the expense of the town.
Yeah, as a planning commission or P O C D, I would see this would be good because it's, you're catching the runoff, as we said, or septic's can leak. So to me, this is good, and it, more participants, actually spreads the cost of the system being upgraded things across more homes. So I'd see it as something makes sense.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? With that being said, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Paul Aurelia. I'd like to make a notion that we give a positive referral to the Water Pollution Control Authority to extend sewers to three-twenty-five and three-thirty-five James Farm Road.
Sarah Graham, I second that motion.
Because we've already discussed it at length, I'm going to put this to a vote. All in favor? Aye, unanimous. So, at this point of the agenda, we're through any voting really needs. The remainder of it is more discussions, updates on what's going on with the planning commission, subcommission, the P O C D. Item eight on the agenda is implementation of plans. So first of all, we have the complete streets. We received the Connecticut D O T District Three acceptance letter to proceed with phase one implementation, along with Main Street acceptance letter included in the packet. I know, Mr. Tada, you've been deeply involved with it. Sarah Graham, I'm not sure if you want to, do you have anything? Okay, so if you don't mind, will you just review that for us?
So this is an outcome of a five-year effort to get bicycle lanes in front of Town Hall painted. And the town had a complete streets plan adopted in two thousand seventeen. And then a policy was adopted at that time. And since then, we've been working on this phase one project. D O T took nearly two years to review our designs and get back to us with a final acceptance letter. And we are so glad and thrilled to actually see this happening. And consultants are preparing the bid documents. So starting next spring, you will see some construction activity. Hopefully, we'll have the bike lanes painted by July twenty twenty-three. So it's a great achievement for the town.
Big time. And I know it took a lot of work and, you know, we were kind of at a stalemate for a while. So thank you for all your hard work and the commission's hard work on it.
I would like to add that we couldn't have done without our partners in Metro Cog. The staff helped us really agree deal to push this project through.
Again, it's a lot of people put in a lot of hard work, so it's awesome and it's positive. So, you know, things are moving forward, which is what we're looking for.
Question?
Yeah.
Do they have a proposed map of, a proposed design of what it would look like? Is that somewhere?
Yes, I requested the consultants to give me an electronic version of the big-size construction drawings so I can post them on website. As soon as they become available, I'll send the link to you.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome.
But we do have our ninety percent designs on the town website, but I can share the hundred percent that were approved with minor revisions.
Under the same is the Sustainable Connecticut Pursuing Climate Leader Designation. If you don't mind, can you just review that with the commission?
Sure. So the town of Stratford achieved silver certification through Sustainable Connecticut last year. And this year, we are applying for a climate leader designation. Molly in Mayor's office is working on this, and she's the project manager. And we've been assisting her in supplying all the data that is required to meet the points that are mentioned in the Sustainable C T E website for achieving this designation. I just wanted to, you know, let you know that the town's working on that. And it's along the lines of our P O C D goals and objectives, where the P O C D, you know, mentions that, you know, the town should ensure sustainability through land use policies and energy and environmental policies. So this would be a great step if we get this designation. The deadline is August twenty-third. So she's working really hard on this, to get this.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody have any questions regarding that for Sus Smitha at this time? Okay, we are moving along to nine other items, which is very big items. Planning, conservation, development, P O C D update, socioeconomic and housing characteristics discussion. Then, just updates on everything, you know, we got coming ahead, because there's a lot of business to be conducted between now and through September, and obviously, post that. So if you don't mind, Sus Smitha, can you just review the last meeting, which was with the department heads and the socioeconomic and housing characteristics that they went over?
Sure. I did enclose the PowerPoint presentation as a hard copy for you all to review in the package. We had, we call this a technical advisory committee comprised of all staff responsible for implementation of the P O C D. We had our second technical advisory committee meeting in July, the last week of July. And the committee went over reviewing this data and asking questions on, you know, demographics. And, you know, like, for example, somebody asked a question as to why Stratford is forecasted to grow, like it is shown in this PowerPoint, like, and only Stratford and Fairfield are the two towns that are poised to grow in the next ten years, whereas the other towns don't show any growth, based on the decennial census forecast. And the consultant mentioned that, you know, it's because of the way the in-migration and out-migration works and based on the fertility and mortality data that they received from Connecticut data centers' projections, division. Also, the fact that we have a new T O D policy that was adopted five years ago that actually helped jumpstart growth in the town. We added five hundred new housing units in our books. And we have a train station that connects to New York City. And most people who don't want to live in New York anymore, post-COVID, are also choosing to relocate to towns like Stratford, which are closer to the train. And Stratford has a naturally affordable housing. So, long story short, we are trying to look at key data points that would help us frame the goals and objectives for the next P O C D, in terms of if we want the town to grow, where do we want it to grow? Or if we want new housing opportunities, how do we want those opportunities to be created in the town? So that's the whole basis of this review. We also had two pop-up events before July, in May, and I think it was in June, early part of June. Sarah Graham was there at the pop-up event. Brian O'Connor was there at both events. One was at the Main Street Festival and one was at Paradise Green. Paul Aurelia was there. Whoever could make it were there, and you interacted with the residents. And everybody, you know, I think, who attended our booth got very interested in the process, and they wanted to know more about it. So we directed them to the P O C D website. And from most people that I heard, when I asked, what do you think are Stratford's strengths? They said, it's the small-town feel that you get when you're in Stratford. And there are people who are Stratford natives, who just don't want to leave the town because they're so, you know, they feel the lifestyle is so comfortable and the quality of life is so good here. And there are some people who did mention that the town needs to focus on cleanup efforts and, you know, focus on some redevelopment efforts on Stratford Army Engine Plant and some, you know, improving the south end, the look and feel of south end in the town. So our consultant has compiled all these comments into one Excel sheet, and we are going to compile more as part of this process. Next month, we are having one more pop-up event at Shakespeare, former Shakespeare site. That will be our last pop-up event. And then we have two workshops planned, public workshops planned in September, and then one more in October. We would be having a high school event in October to hear the high school students on what their vision of the community is, because they're the future for Stratford. And there is a very solid timeline of work from this point onwards. We will be reaching out to all the booths and commissions in November, in the second and third weeks. We, you know, decided that we would set aside ten days, and we would have virtual meetings with them to go over topical discussions, like, for example, if we're having a housing discussion, we would invite Stratford Housing Partnership to the table and talk to them about the updated housing plan and if there is anything that needs to be changed with regards to P O C D's objectives, considering the current environment. So, and then we also have meetings with stakeholders lined up in, I think, January and February. These stakeholders are people from the business community, environmentalists, and people who normally work in Stratford, who have a major stake in Stratford, but who don't work as part of government. And we will also be having reviews of the draft chapters starting January. I know that by March, April, we should have finalized our draft, because there is a sixty-five-day timeline for review, based on state statutes. Once we have the final draft in May, it has to be posted on the town clerk's website, sent to regional cog for their review, and then give the town council sixty-five days to review it and hold a public hearing at the planning commission. So I'm hoping that by September, we would have finished the whole process of public review, comment, and then adopted this plan successfully. That is the goal, and we are working hard towards that goal. And just today, the consultant was discussing with me on the workshop format, which I will, you know, have more information on in our next meeting as well. But just in general, what we want to do is have topic tables and have folks come in and listen to the consultant on what is a P O C D and why is it important, and then open it up for breakout sessions. We have enough qualified staff who can facilitate these tables. But if we need more help, I would reach out to each of you as commission members to help us with the group facilitation at the workshop. We also requested, we're also working on a promotional video, and, which would be released at the workshop and also disseminated through our social media, working with our communications chief of staff and Molly, and who works in Mayor's office, I forgot her designation, but she's been helping us on this community outreach through social media. So a lot of things will be happening and starting September. If you have any email listserv or something that you use to routinely communicate with your constituents, please feel free to let them know about the upcoming workshop dates and how they can get involved in the P O C D process. We also have a draft survey questionnaire that we are developing to put it up online. And that will be released in September, along with the workshop, and that will remain open for a period of three months. So public can take at their leisure whenever they get a chance. And we are also linking that to an online map, so folks can use markers to put dots on the map on what they find are Stratford's trends and, you know, Stratford's weaknesses, and, you know, add more comments. For those who are not as tech-savvy, we are going to place two large-size boards, maps, in the library and in the senior center, so they can physically put the dots on the map and add their comments as posters on the map board, hoping that this will help us include those members of the community that don't normally get involved through our routine boards and commissions and other public processes.
Do you know when the pop-up event at Shakespeare is? Do you have a date for that?
Or any other dates?
Yeah.
The workshop is September thirteenth, I think. And the pop-up event, I have it on the website, so let me just open the website on my phone very quickly.
So the workshops are listed on this PowerPoint presentation on the back. So right, as of right now, Bird's Eye Municipal Complex is Tuesday, September thirteenth, from six to eight. The Booth Memorial Park workshop is Thursday, September twenty-ninth, from six to eight P M. Baldwin Senior Center is Thursday, October thirteenth, six to eight.
Oh, yeah, so Shakespeare Open Air Market is on September eighteenth, ten A M to one P M, it says. The workshop on the website, it says, is on September thirteenth, Tuesday, six to eight P M.
At the Bird's Eye.
Yes, and the second workshop is on, at Booth Memorial Park, Thursday, September twenty-ninth, six to eight P M. And the third workshop is at Baldwin Senior Center, Thursday, October thirteenth, at six to eight P M.
So.
Sorry, Shakespeare, September eighteenth, ten to one?
Yes. Ten to one. The consultant is only signed up for four hours, so we're using one hour to set up and clean up and then be there physically for three hours.
So, obviously, thank you so much for going through that, everything with the P O C D. But it's, there's a lot of stuff. So the old saying, how do you, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? So let's get, let's get through the, let's get through, you know, the initial things. September's going to be busy. Sarah?
That's optional for the planning commission members, except for Brian O'Connor and Paul Aurelia, who will serve as designees on the process. But I think because these meetings are virtual, if you have time, you can attend and listen to what the staff has to say. So we are trying to combine the perspectives of what residents want, what is feasible according to the staff, budget-wise, time-wise, capability-wise, and what is the data saying? What is the science saying? And what is the vision that will come out of all this? So you're not just basing your recommendations on the community preferences alone. Sometimes people may want, somebody said they wanted a Ferris wheel like London Eye by the waterfront. And, which is good, but, you know, is it really feasible? It's something that staff and the zoning regulations can tell you, and that's why you have to look at all perspectives.
Obviously, you know, everybody on the commission is always welcome to come to any meeting. The thirtieth is a midday meeting. I do think it's important for us to reach out to the people and be a part of these workshops and, you know, the, just try to get involved as best we can. I know Mr. Boyd's mentioned in the past, talking to his own constituents, you know, and asking, you know, what their opinion is. That's great. Any input, feedback is really accepted, because we're looking to, that's the whole point of this, is to get the, you know, whole point of this, is to get the, you know, the concepts of what the people of the town of Stratford want. So absolutely. Again, it's going to be a big project. September's going to be very busy with these events, so anybody that can help us out or, you know, just by showing up is helping out and talking to people, it's greatly appreciated.
Speaking of that, Mr. Chairman, are we piggybacking on some of the town council? Or are we allowed to, as commissioners of planning, to piggyback on some of maybe town council meetings in their prospective areas, like we can, like, mention it?
Um, may I answer that?
Please.
We have ten meetings for, to meet with boards, commissions, and committees of the town. One of those is meeting with the town council. So all these meetings, I know you're all working full-time, so it, while it is mandatory for me as a staff and for the consultants to hear them out, I will send you invites. I will C C you on everything. You can pick and choose. If you would like to sit on a meeting, you're the commission who will finally take action on the plan. So please feel free to join the meeting with the meeting link and hear what they have to say.
Right, because the meeting at Bird's Eye Complex, maybe I can get a little more traction if I got the town council person in that area to call people for a meeting, and then we have that as well.
I did send the flyer that we distributed at our pop-up events to council clerk and requested her to share with the council members, and that flyer had dates of upcoming workshops. But just in case, if you would like to reach out to them individually, please feel free to. And we also met a few council members at our pop-up events, too, and they're all aware of these events happening in the town.
Any other comments for Sus Smitha or just general about the P O C D? That concludes all the items on the agenda, so at this point, we're just looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Paul Aurelia, motion to adjourn.
William Boyd, second that motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. So move.
Thank you.